I'll reconvene the session of the Salem Kaiser School Board meeting. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have no agenda modifications tonight, but we do have spotlights for success.
Do you want to make a note of board attendance?
Who's here and who's not?
Oh. Boy, I'm right with it tonight. Board attendance, we're missing Sharon Blazi, and that is all. The remaining board members are present tonight. Now we'll have spotlights to succeed.
Our first spotlight will be presented by Larry Ramirez, our Director of High Schools.
Principal Tiffin here as well this evening. Please come forward. South Salem senior Kudzai Kapurura and West Salem senior Justin Thatch met with Senator Jeff Merkley last week in Washington DC. They were in the nation's capital because these two students were selected by Governor Kate Brown to represent Oregon at the 57th Annual United States Senate Youth Washington Week. While in Washington, student delegates attended meetings with members of Congress, with congressional staff, met the President of the United States, a Justice of Supreme Court, leaders of cabinet agencies, an ambassador to the United States, and senior members of the national press. The United States Youth Senate Program is a unique educational experience for outstanding high school students interested in pursuing careers in public service. In addition to last week's all expense paid trip to Washington, Kudzai and Justin will be awarded $10,000 in college scholarships for undergraduate studies.
What? Wow.
Kudzai, a first generation American with parents from Zimbabwe, she is a trilingual, written word poet, and most importantly, a leader. As class president, Kudzai's unique background has allowed her to serve with empathy. She also serves as a student advisor to the State Board of Education. Justin serves as the Vice President of the National Honor Society, as an attorney on West Salem High School's mock trial team, is a communications coordinator for Oregon Student Voice, and a alumni representative for the National Security Language Initiative for Youth. In March of 2017, he founded the Young Asian Leaders of America as a platform for Asian American youth voices, and currently serves as its executive director. Congratulations to Kudzai and Justin for achieving this monumental honor. Salem Kaiser Public Schools is proud to be represented by such bright and talented students.
All right, our next spotlight will be presented by Lillian Govis, our Director of Communications. Community Partner of the Month.
Great, thank you. It's my pleasure to welcome Major Dan Williams and Judy Loudon, the Aquatics Manager from the Salvation Army Croc Community Center. Thank you so much. Go join the superintendent. Perfect. He's like Madonna, one name. Last month, on Friday, February 8th, five of our high schools were scheduled to take buses across the mountain to attend the Mountain Valley Conference District Swim Meet in Bend. When the weather forecast started looking a little bit dicey, or a lot dicey, with chances of snow, South Salem High School Athletic Director Brian Armstrong started making phone calls. One of the calls Brian made was to Julie Loudon, Aquatics Manager at the Salvation Army Croc Community Center. He asked if it would be possible for Salem Kaiser to use their swim facility if the trip to Bend had to be canceled. Julie said, "Yep, we'll make it work." That morning, they sprung into action. They got the pool and the lanes, they set up a space for a coach's hospitality room, and even brought in extra bleachers. They rolled out the red carpet and had everything ready in a couple hours. The meet went off without a hitch. Brian says that without the Croc Community Center, our high schools could not have swimming programs. All of our high schools practice and hold competitions at the Croc Center, and they bend over backward to support us by making their pool available throughout the year. This year, the number of high school students participating in swimming grew, especially at McKay, McNary, and North Salem High Schools. Brian says because swimming is a no-cut sport, any student who wants to be on the team can join. I guess that's why I never got cut from swimming. He says the swim team lets coaches teach many of the things we want kids to learn to make them successful outside of school. Things like being on time and being a good teammate. Without the Croc Community Center, many students wouldn't get to experience that. Thank you, Major Dan Williams, Judy Loudon, Julie Loudon, and everyone at the Croc Community Center for supporting our swimming programs. We are long overdue, and that's true, in recognizing you as a Community Partner of the Month for your support of our swimming programs, and we look forward to working with you next season and beyond.
All right, our next spotlight will be presented by Jim Orth, our Inter-Minister Superintendent, and he'll be presenting our Business Partner of the Month.
Yvonne, it would be great if you'd come up, and Roy, Principal Schoper, any of the students that are here to celebrate? Excellent. Thank you. This month's Business Partner of the Month is Starbucks. Starbucks Coffee. We're recognizing Starbucks for their support of our career and technical education programs in particular, but also for their support of our students and staff in general. Representing Starbucks tonight is Yvonne Lopez-Tinoco, Store Manager of the Starbucks Coffee Shop at Lancaster and Silverton Road. Starbucks supports us in many ways. To name a few, they donated equipment at our North Salem High School student-run coffee shop. They provide coffee for Avid events and career technical education events. They've provided breakfast and coffee for summer professional development trainings for teachers, and have participated in mock interviews and classroom visits for our Avid programs. As for Starbucks' support for our CTE programs, they've been a sponsor of the CTE and Industry Summit for three years, and also have held competitions for students based on the hit TV show Shark Tank for the past two years. This year's student competition was called "The Pitch," and was held at McKay High School last month. Teams of students from our high schools pitched a new business idea to a panel of Starbucks managers. With us tonight are not our winning team of Logan Llewellyn and Owen McKay from Sprague High School, who presented a business idea for a Rift Cup that has a divider down the middle so customers could experience two drinks in one cup. But two McKay teams tied for second place, and Matthew, is that, are you Matthew? Awesome. Matthew Cuarte and Javier, who is not here, suggested Starbucks target the growing Hispanic population nationwide by offering drinks and pastries derived from Hispanic culture. And Crystal Huen pitched the idea of Starbucks developing an Uba Latte, which is a sweet yam originating in the Philippines. Crystal's presentation was especially impressive because at the last minute, her teammates were unable to attend the competition. So she carried on solo with poise that impressed the judges. Thank you Starbucks for all the support you've given to our CTE and Avid programs and our teachers and students across the district. It's a pleasure to recognize you as our Business Partner of the Month for March.
All right, we have one last spotlight, and Lillian will introduce it. I think we'll have Lillian introduce you, and then we'll...
Sorry, we went off script. This one is especially an important one for us because as we're here with our members of the military, the state just announced that the 41st Infantry Brigade Combat Team has received notification for potential deployment. Approximately 2,400 soldiers will potentially mobilize overseas, and this mobilization will likely start in the fall and winter of 2019. And these are soldiers from our area. Those potential locations for deployment include the Middle East, Africa, and/or Eastern Europe. There will be more information available once an alert order is received closer to the actual deployment. The 41st IBCT is made up of battalions from Oregon, Washington, and New Mexico. All subordinate battalions will also likely be represented in this mobilization, but as of now, the specific units have not been formally identified. Elements of the 41st Infantry Brigade, I'm not a military professional, have served in Saudi Arabia, the Sinai, Kuwait, Bosnia, Iraq, and Afghanistan. The brigade deployed a large contingent known as Task Force Phoenix to Afghanistan in 2006, and again deployed the entire brigade to Iraq in 2009. The most recent overseas deployment of the 41st IBCT was in 2014-15 to Afghanistan. And it was especially important from Board Director Blazi that we recognize this today. She couldn't be here because she's not feeling well, but her work with veterans makes this even more relevant, and it's my pleasure to introduce the people who can really talk about it. And I'll get out of the way.
Thank you.
Chairperson Goss, Superintendent Perry, and members of the School Board. My name is Greg Malacajian. I'm with the Employer Support of the Garden Reserve, a program within the Department of Defense. I'm here this evening because Major Thad Conwell, a teacher at Waldo Middle School, nominated several individuals within the district to be recognized with a Patriot Award from the Employer Support of the Garden Reserve. This is significant because the mission of ESGR is to advocate for service members, employers, and service member families to recognize employers who are complying or exceeding the requirements within the Uniformed Services Employment and Reemployment Rights Act, and to inform service members and employers about the protections, responsibilities, and rights within that act, and to mediate cases where a service member may believe that they have not been afforded the protections or rights under the act in a manner that maintains the best possible relationship between the employer and the employee. So Thad, Major Conwell, if you go over there, and I'm joined also by Cecil Owens of ESGR, put in a nomination for the following people. Vice Principal Joe Valencia of Waldo Middle School, Teresa Nelson, the principal, if you can come forward, and also in recognition that leadership starts at the top, Matt Bondi was recognized, the middle school education, and of course Superintendent Perry, the leader of the organization. And so tonight, we have a Patriot Award to present to each of the people that Thad nominated, and also a statement of support for compliance with USARA, and that can be put in each one of the institutions, and then a little pin, and we'll bring those over to you. [applause] That's the Patriot Award. And that one as well. And Joe. Congratulations. Congratulations. One, two, three. One, two.
Thanks very much. Thanks for taking the time to recognize your support. We'll get back to the superintendent. I wonder if you have something to add?
All right, our next section is calling for public comment, and this part of the section is for meetings that, on topics that are within the agenda for this evening. And we do have one speaker, and that's Berto Rossi. Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening. I'm Berto Rossi from Northeast Salem. I want to address the employment contracts and the superintendent evaluation process on tonight's agenda. Our community is healing from controversies played out in this room in recent months. The perception in my community is that a bureaucracy which is not fully visible or accountable is running our schools, and that these public meetings and the school board elections are window dressing. My alternate view is that we have problems with communication, leadership skills, and corporate influence at the board and management levels. The quality assurance model being used reflects the private sector's values and culture. I don't see strong language there regarding the equity lens or how and where the positions are advertised. I'm not seeing a will to make managerial and administrative positions affirmative action or equity lens-driven appointments. I'm not seeing a consistent practice in posting and discussing these positions, and it seems that these positions can sometimes come with escape hatches that dodge accountability. I want to join other community members in questioning if these positions are necessary and if we can afford them, given the emergent student needs we are learning about at these meetings. I also want to respectfully, rather, question the posting, hiring, and transfer language covering these positions, and the board's oversight of how this is being carried out. We had a difficult struggle here over law enforcement and racial profiling in the schools and the schools-to-prison pipeline. Now these issues resurface with breathalyzer tests. The Teachers Union has been a great community and student advocate organization. Right now, I understand that they are having to fight for rights their members already have, along with the rights of the community members and parents that help support the students they are teaching. You have led difficult discussions here about school funding, but now we're looking at administrative positions, a remodel of the district's human resources offices, and a legal fight over common union rights. It seems to me that this wastes our tax dollars. The board could not agree on opposing ballot measure 105, but you did endorse the School Board Association's political program with its attack on PERS. The attacks on PERS, SKEA advocating for all parents and community members, and on SKE rights, the breathalyzer tests which raise the possibility of racial profiling, these feel like attacks on people who helped win the school bond levy and worked so hard on school boundary plans. The two executive positions and the HR remodel feel like insults being added to injuries. These negatives are not the whole story, but they came on your watch. Accountability isn't blame. Accountability should be used on consistent practice and used to advance drama, not used to advance drama and division. Please consider this as you take up the evaluation process and deal with the employment contracts. Let's raise the bar together and have some healing and fairness in this room. Thank you very much.
Thank you for speaking. We now move into action items, and we do have a proclamation, and I would like to, the proclamation is for child abuse prevention for this month. We have Leslie Middle School Peer Helpers here to give a brief presentation tonight. Would those people like to come forward to the podium? Scared me for a minute. Why don't I read the proclamation first, and then people in the audience will know what you're all about. Child Abuse Prevention Month, whereas in 2017, there were 11,377 reported victims. Before I forget, we have to make some changes in the numbers. So there will be freshly changed proclamation copies out on the table when you leave this morning. It's just the numbers that are a little off this time. 11,377 reported victims of child abuse and neglect in Oregon, of which 1,347 were victims in Marion and Polk Counties combined. And whereas we endeavor to join together as individuals, organizations, and government agencies to prevent child abuse in our state by providing opportunities to educate, train, and support caregivers by raising awareness of relevant topics, including child development, basic care skills, discipline strategies, and goal-setting for parents. And whereas by strengthening families and providing safe, stable, and nurturing environments that are, excuse me, are free from violence, abuse, and neglect, opportunities are created for children's optimal growth and success, ensuring a secure future for our communities where the needs of children are a priority and the needs of families are met. Now therefore, the Board of Directors of Salem Kaiser School District 24J ask everyone to join together in protecting our children, and thus hereby proclaim April 219 as Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Thank you, Chair Goss, Superintendent Perry, and members of the board. My name is Debbie Joa, and I am the district's Prevention and Protection Coordinator. I want to thank you for proclaiming April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. In your packets, you have an invitation to an event that is going to be held on Friday, April 5th, and this is a kickoff event for Child Abuse Prevention Month in Marion County. You also have a sign that says "I Will" with a line below it where you can write in one or two steps that you will take to help prevent child abuse in our community. In a few minutes, we're going to watch a video that was created by the Marion County Child Abuse Prevention Committee in collaboration with the video production class at CTEC, and you will see these signs again. But first, I would like to introduce Pete Teller, School Counselor at Leslie Middle School, and the Leslie Middle School Peer Helpers.
So with me this evening are a group of peer helpers that are from Leslie Middle School, and we'll have them introduce themselves individually.
Hello, my name is Luke Schaefer.
I'm Kimberly Garcia.
I'm Brayden Close.
And I'm Tatum Berkey.
And I'm Juliana Sidney.
Hi, I'm Peyton Bradley.
I'm Alena Frierson.
I'm Teresa Wonderlick.
April is National Child Abuse Prevention Month, a time when we can continue building strong and thriving families. Every family has the chance to be a loving, nurturing, and safe place where each person is valued and cherished.
What I appreciate most about my family is equality, because my family is very diverse, but it hasn't stopped my sister or I from being able to meet other members of our family. My family comes from different financial situations, health issues, disabilities, a vast variety of diverse ethnicities, and more. I value being able to meet a lot of my extended family, and if my parents didn't believe in equality, or even if my extended family didn't believe in equality, I would be limited to the family I know now. It's a truly amazing thing to be able to meet other family members. One last benefit that my family has given me is I'm not limited with who I can have as friends. My family is okay with accepting friends of mine that come from a variety of different backgrounds. I love my diverse family and friends, and I feel lucky that I have the family I have who believes in equality and believes that we are all equal.
One thing that I appreciate about my family is their support. One way that my family has shown me support is by making me a top priority. My mom, she takes off one Saturday every month to take me to my Ulama Academy sessions. She also takes a break from work to take me to my mentor and my core meetings. This makes me feel cared for and shows me that I am loved. Another way that my mom shows me support is by encouraging me. My mom comes to my volleyball games and cheers me on, even though she never had the opportunity to be on the volleyball team. She also goes to my band concerts. Her attendance at my events makes me feel empowered to push forward. Lastly, my mom shows me that relaxing is also important. It is okay for me to take a break. Sometimes we might watch a movie, or she might even teach me how to cook something. Relaxing with my mom makes me feel happy and improves my attitude. My wish is for every kid to have the love, encouragement, and support that I have.
What I appreciate most about my family is how caring they are. I know that if I need help with a school project, or I've had a tough day at school, my family is always there to help or talk with me, and I think I take that for granted, because for me, it's never a question of if they're going to be there. Every time that I have a big project for school, and I need extra help to set the final touches in place, when I've had a tough day at school because I failed a test, my family is there to talk to, let me know it's going to be okay, and help me with whatever I need. And we take these moments for granted, even though someone else might not have that comfort. And just by asking someone how their day is, they can start feeling valued and cherished. This is what we can do to care for others and build families that care for each other.
All families can make one very simple, easy choice to safeguard themselves and those around them. We can all take the hands and words are not for hurting pledge and promise not to use our hands or our words for hurting ourselves or others. If we as a community promise to never take an action or make a decision without first asking if we would be hurting ourselves or someone else by unintentionally denying access, opportunity, withholding rights or privileges, and/or discriminating against persons for reasons beyond their control, then we can be rest assured that all of our families will thrive and succeed. Everyone, please stand and raise your right hand. Now repeat after us as we take the Hands and Words Are Not For Hurting pledge, first in Spanish, then in English. No saré.
Mis manos o mis palabras.
Mis manos o mis palabras. Para lastimar.
Para lastimar.
A otros o a mí mismo.
A otros o a mis, mis. Now in English. I will not.
I will not.
Use my hands.
Use my hands. Or my words.
Or my words.
For hurting.
For hurting.
Myself.
Myself.
Or others.
Or others.
I'm going to turn you around and have you go back to the podium for a moment, because we'll need to sign the proclamation.
Madam Chair, I'd move adoption of the proclamation.
Yeah, that is right. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. The proclamation has been asked for, the motion has been asked for by Director Green, and it's been seconded by Director Kylo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The proclamation passes. Now you kids can come back up if you want to watch this.
Okay. We just want you to have exercise.
our hands or our words for hurting ourselves or others. If we as a community promise to never take an action or make a decision without first asking if we would be hurting ourselves or someone else by unintentionally denying access, opportunity, withholding rights or privileges, and/or discriminating against persons for reasons beyond their control, then we can be rest assured that all of our families will thrive and succeed. Everyone, please stand and raise your right hand. Now repeat after us as we take the Hands and Words or Not for Hurting pledge, first in Spanish, then in English. No saré.
Mis manos o mis palabras.
Mis manos o mis palabras. Para lastimar.
A otros o a mí mismo.
A otros o a mis mis. Now in English. I will not.
I will not.
Use my hands.
Use my hands. Or my words.
Or my words.
For hurting.
For hurting.
Myself.
Myself.
Or others.
Or others.
I'm going to turn you around and have you go back to the podium for a moment, because we'll need to sign the proclamation.
Madam Chair, I'd move adoption of the proclamation.
Yeah, that is right. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. The proclamation has been asked for, the motion has been asked for by Director Green. It's been seconded by Director Kylo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The proclamation passes. Now you kids can come back up if you want to watch this.
We just want you to have exercise.
Get your steps.
Thank you very much. The next part of our meeting tonight. The next part of our meeting tonight. Thank you, that was a nice video to share. On the action items, we have a second one, B, approved modifications to the findings of fact in support of the use of the construction manager and the general contractor methodology for June of 2018.
And our Chief Operation Officer, Mike Wolf, will walk you through this action item.
Okay. Good evening Chair Goss, Superintendent Perry, and members of the board. So this document was presented as information in February 13th of last year and approved February 27th, and you have the following amendments that we're requesting, that you approve tonight that will allow for more specificity in contracting. And as you can see, there is item one, and it's the addition of add/or packages of projects and change the threshold to, from exceed 20 million to exceed 4 million. And so our recommendation is that the board approve the amendments to the facts, the findings of facts in support of the use of construction manager, general contractor, CMGC methodology, as we move forward in the delivery of the 2018 bond.
Thank you, Mike. Director Kylo?
I would move that we approve Action Item 6B.
Second. And the motion has been suggested by Director Kylo, and it's been seconded by Director Hyon. All those in favor?
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
I was just wondering why the drop in the amount, 20 million to 4 million?
That's a good question. The 20 million threshold was the, sort of, the way we initiated the program, and now these are construction thresholds, not total projects. And so when you look at the different requirements or conditions, the complexities that we would actually apply CMGC, now that we're into more of the delivery cycle and starting to assign design teams, we see great value in being able to package or bundle projects that wouldn't exceed the 20 million, but would certainly come up to the 15, 16, 17 million dollar range, which would justify the need or the use of CMGC. So it provides more flexibility for the delivery of the program as we proceed.
Thank you.
Are there discussion, questions? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is the consent calendar.
Now there's one more.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see it down there. I should have. So Director Kylo, would you like to form a motion for that?
No, I would not.
Director Green?
Yes, I would move to accept the 2017-2018 evaluation of the superintendent.
Second.
Are we going?
Move the second, so discussion now.
Move the second? Now discussion? I think we have an amendment to this.
I think we.
No.
No, we made the amendments in executive session.
We have the summary, which was not amended.
Okay. For the audience tonight, there is, when you leave, there will be a sheet out on the table, and it will be a summary of the superintendent's evaluation, and you're welcome to pick one up. So we still have.
Yeah, we have a discussion.
More discussion, Chuck?
Yes, I'd like to personally congratulate the superintendent on another good evaluation, another good year. We're very fortunate to have her. I see that the contract will be extended for a considerable amount of time, so we thank her for doing a good job, great job. And I'd also like to thank board leadership for the work that they did, kind of pulling all of the information together to do the evaluation. Thank you.
Are there any other comments on Director Lipold?
Yep. I just wanted to say that, I mean, first off, with her job, I mean, there's no, it's hard to, we can't really put Paul, like, specific words on how huge that job is and how much work goes into it. You know, it's tough, because no matter what choice you make, not everyone's going to be happy, right? There's always going to be those people who aren't. And I would just like to thank Superintendent Perry for her leadership and for her advocacy for our students and doing the right thing. I think another important thing to note is that, I mean, her job is, if we approve something, she's got to execute it, right? So if we approve something and we don't agree with it, that's up to us to change that. Her job is to execute that. And then also, take note, just for the public, that this is about 2017-2018 school year, not this school year that's happening right now. It's, this is about the previous year, just so that way we know. Anyways, I just want to say, thank you for all of your hard work. I think you've done a great job. I think you've taken initiative and been very proactive on letting us know about things, rather than letting it come to us later, and appreciate that.
Thank you. Director Hyon?
So I was in Dallas last night, speaking to some people who really kind of wanted her back, and I told them, no, she's ours.
I'm glad. Other comments?
No.
Sounds pretty good to me. Okay, all those, we don't vote on. Okay, all those in favor of the superintendent's contract?
Evaluation.
Evaluation as well? Please signify by saying aye.
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 No? Those, anyone not?
Unanimous.
It's unanimous. Thank you very much for all of your efforts. Okay, now to the consent calendar. Is there any board member that wishes to pull an item?
Yes.
Yes, Madam Chair, I wish to pull Item 7B.
Okay, and?
Director Kylo.
Director Kylo, you have one.
7C and 7D.
Okay, 7C and D.
Madam Chair, then I would move acceptance of the grants as presented in the consent calendar.
Thank you.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Green and seconded by Director Kylo. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Seeing none? We'll proceed.
The snail actions.
Yeah.
Director Lipold?
Oh yeah, are we going into the ones that we pulled?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good. On consent calendar, Item 7B, I would like to declare a conflict of interest. My brother works for West Salem High School, and so I got to declare that, and I cannot vote on this because of that. However, I would like to say that he is awesome, as well as the other teachers, and I would vote yes, if I could vote.
Thank you, Director Lipold. Any other comments? Director Kylo?
I would move approval of Item 7B.
Second.
There appears to be a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay? Seeing none? We have approved unanimously the first personnel auction.
Madam Chair, you have one director who had to declare a conflict and could not vote, and that does need to be reflected in the minutes.
We have that? Okay.
Thank you, Jim.
Consent calendar?
Straight there.
C, Employment Contract Executive Director of Human Resources.
It shouldn't have been.
He asked to pull it, so we should probably.
Here it is.
Am I being recognized?
You are, Director Kylo.
Thank you. I would like our votes recorded for both Items 7C and 7D.
Any, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I would move adoption of Item 7C.
Second.
It's been proposed and seconded. It was Director Green who proposed it, and Director Kylo, no, Director Lee who seconded it. So all those in favor?
Do we need discussion, Madam Chair?
Oh yeah, discussion.
Yes, we do, every time. So, discussion.
I just had one question, Madam Chair, I want to make sure, and it's for both contracts, so either the Executive Director of Human Resources or the COO, they are receiving the same fringe benefit package that every employee in the district receives, is that correct?
Correct.
That's a good question.
Any other questions? Now we'll vote. All those in favor? Of C, Item C, Employment Contract Executive Director of Human Resources. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
One nay? So the motion passes. Director Kylo?
And Madam Chair, I would move adoption of the contract for the Chief Operations Officer, Item Consent, and Item 7D.
Second.
It's been proposed by Director Green, seconded by Director Lipold. All right, let's move into a discussion, if there is any. Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 It appears, or is there?
Aye.
And Director Kylo is nay. So moving on.
You know, Madam Chair, if I could just add something, I know I'm out of line, I should have done it earlier, but I'd just like to commend Michael Wolf for the fine job he's been doing, especially this year, in light of the difficulties, not the difficulties we had, but the complex task of boundary changes. That was a long, arduous process, a lot of evening meetings, and I'm not sure whether that fits in his job description, but it was in good hands, and I think we did a good job on the whole boundary issue, and we had good leadership from people outside of the district, but I know that Mr. Wolf was very involved with that, so.
I think we all concur with that. Okay, moving on to?
Readings.
The readings for this evening? Mr. Wolf?
This is the first reading on the purchase of the Auburn Park from Marion County, and I'll have Mr. Wolf present it, but it's also another example of an issue he's been working on with his team for years, and so I'll turn it over to you to describe this transaction.
Okay, thank you Superintendent Perry. So as a superintendent has stated, we've been working with Marion County for several months on the purchase of Auburn Park, which is approximately close to 4.4 acres, and you can see that in your handout, but it's also on the right-hand side of the schematic design is the current Auburn Park that as it heads south, you can see the large green field that's also part of Auburn Park. So the sale of, this is a unique transaction, by the way. This park was established many years ago by the use of federal funds from the Land and Conservation, Land and Water Conservation Fund, which was actually established during the Kennedy administration back in the 60s, and it was really set up to create public outdoor recreational use throughout the country, and Auburn Park actually became part of the National Park Service inventory of parkland. And so there's a specific process that you go through, it's a conversion process, it's called the Section 6F Conversion Process, and it's basically, it was set up for grant-assisted areas that they're to remain forever available for public outdoor recreation use, or be replaced by lands of equal market value and recreational usefulness. And so in essence, what this agreement with Marion County and the federal government states is that we will, based on your approval, purchase the four acres, 4.4 acres, for $360,000. There's also an additional $15,000 of potential expenses to help with future appraisals that Marion County will need to conduct to find the replacement parkland in the future. And so what's nice about this is, instead of waiting until Marion County could find the 4.4 acres at some future point in time, and then have this transaction take place, we're actually able, as a district, to purchase the land, receive the property, Marion County will escrow the funds, and then that gives them flexibility to actually find adequate recreational park space where they see the most benefit for the citizens in the community. And so we know, as an example, that the county is very interested in expanding the parks, the recreational spaces in the San Yum Canyon, so up the canyon would be an area that they would be looking. So what we have is just a first reading. The total transaction could be up to $375,000, assuming that the county used all $15,000 worth of appraisals. We'll bring this back next month for action.
Do we have any board questions? Discussion? Thank you, Mike.
We'll let him stay at the podium for the next item.
Property transaction with the City of Kaiser in. Property transaction with the City of Kaiser in signature authority is next.
Yes, it is. Thank you. So, the City of Kaiser's Transportation System Plan, TSP, calls for the addition of a dedicated right-turn lane for westbound traffic on Lock Haven Drive to turn north onto 14th Avenue. What that means for us is at Whittaker Middle School, which is right along Lock Haven, just to the west of Whittaker is 14th Avenue. And what this will do, there's a lot of queuing, a lot of backup in traffic, a lot of congestion during drop-off and pickup times. And this will actually help alleviate that in the future by creating a right-hand turn lane onto 14th. And to do that, the City of Kaiser is asking that we dedicate a portion of our right-of-way for this use. And so, that's what...this is a first reading, even though it says this is an action item in the recommendation. This is a first reading to be brought back for action at the April 9 meeting. And happy to entertain any questions on this transaction.
Director Green?
So, Mike, I'm looking at the board plate here, and it appears all costs for construction will be borne by the City of Kaiser. But did I hear you correctly, we're donating the property for this to occur?
It's not a donation, it's a dedication of right-of-way. So, we retain ownership. But as opposed to an easement, typically when there's a capital investment, like a roadway dedication of right-of-way is a more appropriate real estate transaction.
Follow-up question, Madam Chair?
Yes.
If that's the case, then who has responsibility for upkeep?
They will. Yeah, they will. It's part of their transportation system plan. It's an infrastructure investment. It'll be a city road, right-hand turn lane on a dedicated piece of right-of-way for that specific use.
I would just like to make sure we have that in whatever agreement we have with the City of Kaiser, that upkeep on that will be done by them. Because in a lot of instances, sometimes cities change their codes, and all of a sudden, the homeowner or the property owner is due to do the upkeep, so...
Absolutely. What I'll say is, when we bring this back for action next month, we'll have all of that taken care of and present that for your approval.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, that will come back next month. Moving on, I'm going to turn it over to the superintendent for reports. First one being emergency student needs.
All right, this is emergent. This is a continuation of the reports on emergent student needs. And with that, I'll introduce Director Sprouls, who's going to introduce our presenters tonight. And I want to thank them for waiting in the agenda. I'm sorry about that. All right.
So, I'm, well, Chairperson Goss and Superintendent Perry. And Board Directors, we are lucky tonight to be able to hear an example of what we've been talking about around emergent student needs. You might remember all the way back to January when we had our first presentation on emergent student needs, and we talked about how some of these needs are created from students who are in traumatic environments. And we talked about the ACES survey and how that can impact how our kids show up at school. A few weeks later, then you heard from David Fender, who's the Director of Behavioral Learning for our school district. And he talked about how we're trying hard as a district to create systems and structures to address the needs of students who are experiencing kind of extreme behavioral and emotional needs. Tonight, we're lucky enough to hear from Highland Elementary, and we have Kristi Cheever, we have Gabby Arenas, and we have Jessica Tucker. And Gabby and Jessica are two teachers, and Kristi's the principal at Highland. And so, they're going to give us an example of how one school has taken some of the learning that we have across the district and has really started to create systems to embrace some of those kids who are most at risk of not being successful in our system. So, while the work is still really hard at Highland, and Kristi would be the first one to tell you, they haven't arrived. It's still an ongoing daily work, and it is hard. They're starting to see some glimpses of what's working, and it's things that we can start to replicate across the district. So, I'm thrilled that we're going to get an example of what we're trying in real practice through Highland. And it's hard work, and it's really done through inspirational visionary leadership. And that starts with somebody like Kristi. So, I'm thrilled they're here to share with us tonight.
Thank you, and we're excited to be here and just share a little bit about our journey with PBIS implementation that Positive Behavior Intervention supports. And our celebration's kind of where we're at now, what we can look at for things that are working and identify what our next steps and our goals for the next coming school years. So, you might be familiar with this graphic. It is kind of our target for any multi-tiered system of support. This is specifically referring to behavior supports. And kind of what we look at as our goal is that we can provide enough core instruction and support for all students that about 80% of kids will achieve success at school with those supports. And then we have the next level. We know that some kids will need some additional supports. That could be some additional small group instruction. That could be additional adult relationships. That could be sensory tools. But we have a percentage of kids that are going to need some additional supports to achieve success at school. And then that top part of the pyramid represents kiddos who really need individualized support to reach that success at school. So, as we were looking at our PBIS implementation in our first year, we were really just focused on the core, the initial stages. We couldn't build the plane all at once. It was really just focusing on that core instruction and what can we do for all students that will help us get closer and closer to that 80% of kids being successful with those supports. So, in that first year, we had a lot of conversations about school-wide expectations, kind of calibrating our expectations for all staff. What does it really look like? How do we want students to behave in the cafeteria? What's acceptable behavior in the hallway? And we also spent a lot of time talking about our values around, what do we see as our values around how we treat students, our values around what's education supposed to look like, and coming to some real common understandings around those pieces. We talked about classroom teachers helped kind of develop their own kind of explicitly taught routines, like what structures are we going to have in the classroom? How are we going to teach those? And really thinking it through and writing that out, documenting it, so we had a process and some supports for our newest teachers to our most veteran teachers. And kind of that basic clear expectations, explicitly teaching routines, and then systems for rewards and consequences that were clear and posted. That also led us, obviously, if we've got consistent expectations, grade-level teams and PBIS team worked to develop lesson plans so we could be sure that those expectations were taught consistently to all students. We also established our school-wide system for rewards and consequences. So, it was really clear. We use high-five bucks as just kind of that recognition. It has a positive, some positive praise, recognizing that positive behavior. And then it's an additional incentive for students in order to recognize their hard work. And then we needed clear and school-wide systems for consequences. So, everybody was on the same page. How do we respond when the behavior is not what we expect? So, all of that was kind of in our initial stages. And as we continued to build that, in our second year, we looked to expand a little bit and take it beyond just school-wide expectations and lessons for cafeteria and hallway and playground, and kind of looking at what is the most essential or most critical social-emotional learning? What do we want all Highland students to know? What skills do we want them to have? What are those essential learning targets? So, we worked in collaborative teams, again, grade-level teams, to develop some resources. And Gabby and Jessica are going to share a little bit more about those in a minute. But we were looking at, again, identifying what's the linking in that consistent core instruction for social-emotional learning for all kids. In that second year, we were also working to kind of... So, we were still building that tier-one support, trying to get more consistent with expectations, consistent reinforcers, and then also developing some systems of support for the some students, the kids that need some extra support. So, what would those tier-two supports look like? Or that little bit of extra support to support success? That included break space, so having a designated break space. Sometimes in the classrooms, we also have a school-wide break space with tools for self-regulation, with sensory tools, things kids can fidget with, sensory things that can help them kind of decompress. Some small group instruction that was targeted to the behavior that we might be seeing. So, we had, we could collect that information and go, oh, we're noticing, you know, kids might be struggling. We use zones of regulation as a curriculum or a small group to target instruction for kids who might be struggling regulating their emotions. And then also just that access to a check-in, check-out, which is just as informal. It's really about building the relationship where a student has a preferred adult to check in with in the morning, set some goals for the day, check out with at the end of the day to reflect and kind of that connection piece. And so, I am going to turn it over to Gabby, who's going to share a little bit more in detail about kind of the journey and some of the lessons that we worked together to create for that social-emotional learning piece.
Okay. So, I'm going to talk to you guys, as you can see, a little bit about the brain. So, bear with me. I'm going to try to make sure that I explain everything to the best of my abilities. So, our curiosity about the brain and its functions began after we read the book Fostering Resilient Learners, which is where we learned how negative stress can really disrupt the development of the brain in a multitude of ways. And after learning about the amount of times it's about learning the amount of time that students with trauma spend using the limbic system, which is designed as a tool for survival, we begin to ask a lot of questions. And one of those was, how do we help students spend more time in the neocortex, part of the brain, where they can process information as it's meant to be processed? So, the model before you shows the brain divided into two major compartments, the downstairs part of the brain and the upstairs part of the brain. The downstairs part of the brain is the limbic system, which can be described as the feeling part of the brain. And this system is the first to receive input, any type of input. If we feel safe, the system will let information bypass and go to the upstairs portion of the brain. And if we feel any type of stress or fear, this part of the brain will go into fight, flight, and freeze mode and will hijack any information from reaching the neocortex or the upstairs part of the brain. And so, the upstairs part of the brain is super important because it houses our prefrontal cortex, which is where we process, analyze, reason, and problem solve. And this is essentially our thinking part of the brain. When students feel safe and calm, they're able to process information in this part of the brain and house it in its appropriate place, whether it's long-term, short-term memory. With that said, our goal was and is to look for resources that help students learn to cope with academic and social stress so that they can learn to self-regulate in order to let the downstairs brain let information bypass to the upstairs part of the brain. We've taken a variety of resources, as Mrs. Cheever mentioned, such as the Zones of Regulation, Second Step, Kelsall's Wheel, and Mind Up to create a framework. This framework connects the tools we have, and it paves the way for the addition of future resources. We have collaborative work groups that continue to refine, adjust, and add lessons that we've created. We have a solid resource bank of lessons that teachers can use based on the needs of classrooms, and teachers can access the materials within their Google Doc framework. And so, what does that mean for our kids? You guys are going to get a chance to see some of our Highland kiddos answer the following questions. What skills or strategies have you learned to help? Hang on, sorry. Pointed this way.
All right, we might need Linda to click.
Oh.
The video's going on her machine. It's just not up there yet.
That's okay. Oh, well, that gets solved. So, the questions are, what skills or strategies have you learned to help you solve problems with friends, manage your emotions, and stay motivated even when your work is hard?
Can you click through to the link on the bottom?
This will be the best part, the kids, too. Not that you weren't great. You were great. There we go.
There it is.
Right there.
We live in the future.
Got to watch the ads.
You can click on skip ads.
There you can skip.
Now you can, yeah.
Yeah. She can't see her cursor. There we go. Oh, no, okay. This is not what we wanted to see. Oh, no. That's clarification. That's not what we... That is not your video. That is not your video.
I don't know what you're trying to show us. Are we safe now? Let's get it.
This year, I learned what...I learned how to take a break, sometimes do brain puzzles. I go with...I use sand, and I can be in my...I can be in a tent and other things. That means I cover my cars and my sleeves, and I have my own bubble space, and I have my hands to my own tray, and I chew with my mouth closed.
That you can talk it out when you're having problems or having emotional breakdowns, which helps me move on and reprocess the life that I'm now.
This year, I learned some strategies to calm down, like such as taking a quiet break, which helps me take control of my emotions.
This year, I learned that you need to have positive self-talk, and like, I can do this, I'm awesome. If you don't have positive self-talk and negative self-talk, like, I'm horrible, I'm bad at this, it's going to send that information to your RAS and find evidence that you're bad and you're horrible. That's why it's important to have positive self-talk.
One thing I learned this year was about my brain. My brain helps me, my upstairs brain helps me focus, learn, and make good decisions. My downstairs brain helps me survive.
When my downstairs brain takes over, I go to fight, flight, and freeze. And then the door in my brain shuts, and I can't ever go back up to my upstairs brain until I try to work hard in my downstairs brain to get it back, the door open, to go back up to my upstairs brain.
Upstairs brain helps you focus and make decisions for yourself, and the downstairs brain is responsible for basic functions like... brain is responsible for basic functions like eating and blinking and other things. It also helps you make, causes reactions and it tries to keep you thinking. And when the downstairs brain takes over, you make decisions without thinking because they cannot, they can't connect.
As a result of all the work that we have done, we have seen many benefits for staff and students. On a school survey, staff were asked to rate the following statement based on your own self-reflection. I have the skills and strategies needed to manage student behavior and support social emotional learning. And as you can see, 100% of staff either agreed or strongly agreed that they had the skills to do this. We can attribute this to the time spent on professional development and collaboration that has built confidence for all staff, including teachers and instructional assistants. I do want to say that this work is hard, but with the shared values of student first, we support each other and it is very rewarding to see the positive impacts for kids. We have also seen great benefits for students in both behavior data and academic results. On the left, we have our data showing all of the major behavior trackers using the Swiss data collection. The green shows students that have received zero or one behavior referral this whole year. Yellow shows two to five, and red is six or more. From early in the presentation, we saw that the goal for the green was 80%, and we are well above that number, which shows most of our students are supported using core instruction and common behavior expectations. This has then in turn benefited students in academics as well. On the right, we have our grade for the student progress on the state report card for 2017 and 2018. On the English Language Arts and Math State Assessment, we have seen improvements each year. And this last year, we received a grade of high student progress, and this growth is compared to all of the elementary, all the other elementary schools in Oregon. Now for some of our next steps. So currently, we are working on administrating the Panorama Survey, and we are looking forward to getting our student results so that we can think of some next steps to benefit our students next year. We are also adding strategies for increasing parent engagement and support that we provide families, such as parent communication logs and resources that they can take home. We are also supporting our, we're, no, sorry. We're increasing the collaboration with Parrish, and we hope to improve supports for students with the transition from elementary to middle school. And finally, our PBIS team is currently doing a book study on the book Culturally Responsive Teaching and the Brain, and we're doing, are hoping to gain some knowledge from that, and we're going to create professional developments for all staff next year.
That kind of wraps it up. That's kind of a summary of our journey with that PBIS implementation and kind of what we're working on to support students at Highland.
So do you mind if we open up and see if there's any questions from board members?
Sure.
Any questions?
Well, I have a few, because this is something I've, I was asking about in our last meeting, so I just want to say thank you for coming out here. Thank you for being willing to do that, just because I know it's not always fun to talk in front of 30,000 people, so.
Don't tell us that.
So thank you. And then one of my biggest questions is, because I mean, around all of our schools, we're trying to implement the same program, but it seems as if you guys have found a lot of success. So what would you say is one of the biggest contributors to this, to your success? Like what is, if you had to pick one thing?
Okay. I can speak to it a little and we can see if Jessica and Gabby agree, but I think building it over time and spending time on those common values and common expectations has been very helpful, because then it's easier to, when we have a common lens on how we're looking at student behavior and a common values of how we want to support students, then, then we can kind of work collaboratively to address needs as they come up. And then that reflective process, like every day is a reflection on what happened and then what are we, what are we going to do tomorrow based on what we learned today? Does that help?
Yeah, no, that's good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It was interesting. Appreciate it.
Is that ours? No? What was that? I don't usually read physical books. Are you ready to go on to the next report?
Yes.
All right. Our next report is on the Community Bond Oversight Committee, and Mike will provide this report. It's okay.
So a quick update on CIBOC. We had our second meeting and it really matched up nicely sequencing with the bond or the boundary review task force recommendations, because we had schools that required additional investments from the bond. And so we were able to have that conversation following the task force recommendations to the board. And then the CIBOC meeting where CIBOC concurred with the task force recommendations to add two capital construction projects, one at Miller and one at Kennedy Elementary Schools that weren't originally programmed for capital construction in the bond, but also the acknowledgement that there were three other schools based on the boundary adjustments that would need some investments but were already in, in the bond. Air, Hauk, and Grant Elementary. Now, Grant Elementary is really to help support the movement of our DLC students into Grant, because remember, part of the overall adjustment throughout the district is to make sure that our students with special needs aren't transported all around the district just to receive services. That we have a three-year implementation plan where all of our students will be able to stay in, in their feeder system and ultimately graduate at their home high school. So that was really part of the conversation, the big part of the conversation at CIBOC at its last meeting. Those five projects total about $20 million worth of investment, and you, as a board, had already approved those at your next meeting when you approved the final recommendations. One thing I would like to add is we've met with board leadership and have, have been approved to basically add a community member to CIBOC from the McKay feeder system, because we don't actually have an individual. I know we have Director Hyun that represents that, but as a CIBOC member, we didn't have a member from the community that wasn't a board member. So we will initiate a recruitment process to find a member from the McKay feeder system that we can add, and we'll provide a recommendation for your approval at your next meeting to add that member. We also want to make sure, though, that we also add a student from the Student Equity Committee, and we will also do that and bring that recommendation to you at your next meeting. So there'll be two changes, two additions to the Community Bond Oversight Committee, a representative from the McKay feeder system, and a representative from the Student Equity Committee.
And Mike, just one, when is, I see it says April 8th, but I don't think that's the right date for the next CIBOC?
We, we had two dates, originally the 8th and the 22nd, and when we printed this one, we were thinking the 8th would be the better one, but from a timing perspective, it makes more sense to have the next CIBOC meeting on the 22nd so that the board can have their discussions and approve the new members, and then at that next CIBOC meeting, we'll have the new members involved.
22nd of May.
Of April. Of April. Are there any questions? 5:00 PM.
5:30 works. There was also 5 o'clock on the sheet, but 5:30 has been our typical start time.
Are there any questions for Mike? Okay, thank you. All right. I'll go on to the next report, Executive Limitation Number Nine, Asset Protection. And I'm just going to do a couple highlights on this. Under executive limitation or number two here, fail to maintain the district's self-insurance fund at a level necessary to provide coverage against theft and casualty losses. Near the bottom of that, I just want to kind of alert you that we have asked for an updated actuarial report on this fund, and we'll be providing, provide additional information regarding the amount sufficient, because we have not done that for a number of years, so that will help us. We did work to get that fund up a bit, but we think it's time that an actuarial told us what we needed in that fund. The next item is number three, fail to maintain excess insurance costs to cover losses. And I just want to point to kind of where in that paragraph, we've got an additional $10 million through Genesis, additional $250 million per occurrence for replacement costs. There's earthquake and flooding coverage, limited to $25 million, and then additional flood insurance for North Salem and Parrish Middle School. Number four, I wanted to highlight that the district's annual audit does check on our internal controls, and so they do dig into that. And then under number five, acquire, encumber, dispose of land without board approval. Remember, we had the situation at Crossler where we had that easement, we found out about after the fact. So I wanted to be sure that that was in this report so that when we found out about it, we brought it to your attention. And I think that's the end of my comments related to this report, and I'll open it up for questions.
Can we go into a little bit more detail on the Crossler thing? Just that way.
Yeah. So the situation at Crossler, and I'm going to have Mike help me if I don't get this all the way right, but we had first right of refusal on that piece of that property since 1994, on this property adjacent to Crossler Middle School. And the city of Salem gave away that authority to a developer and, because nobody found the 1994 first right of refusal in the title search, so the title search did not discover that. And once we found out about it, then we worked to have that property sold to the developer who was already in the process of getting ready to build on that property. Does that help?
Yeah.
Thanks. All right. I'll go on to Executive Limitation Number Ten, Facilities. And this is the 10th of our 12 monitoring reports. And you'll notice in this one, we are beginning to demonstrate that around, our work around the bond. So in number two, fail to establish a procedure for development of a long-range facility plan. Remember, that came before the bond election, so the bond helps us address that facility need as we grow. And then the next one around capital project planning and routine maintenance, we also have pointed to the bond again there, which was all part of that facilities report. And let's see. Number five, fail to develop and consistently administer detailed community use guidelines and fees. You have not approved a fee change since 2004, and I do think this is something that we should put on our summer planning, because we have continued pressure of the need to use our facilities. And it isn't about use, it's about the costs that come with use. So I think that is something we should talk about in our summer planning, just because we have transitioned from the city of Salem having the primary responsibility for some scheduling to district staff. And so we've got to be really sure we've got that really well-defined in a relationship. So this is going to be one to pay attention to this summer. And with that, I'll open it up for questions.
So what do we charge for people to use our facilities right now?
It varies, but do you have some, it's, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's actually on our website. We can get that information to you, but it's, it depends on the type of user. So, you know, if it's a government-to-government use, it's a different fee than if it's for-profit organization. So it's a, it's a graduated scale, so to speak, but we have it all delineated.
Okay. Thanks. It is hard, it's hard on nonprofits, but it isn't a large amount. But if you're a nonprofit who is, needs to use overseas, it does add up, but it's fairly low in comparison. It's mainly, you know, to think about toilet paper and paper towels and custodians to lock up.
Having somebody on site.
Having somebody on site. Yep. Yeah, really important to us is to have somebody on site.
Right.
Okay, we do have an information item, and that's board and budget committee meeting schedules, and you'll see those on a packet, on your packet at the very back.
And just as a reminder, we do have another budget committee meeting next week. We'll do some follow-up with some additional reports to you in preparation for the budget message that's on April 23rd.
Any questions on that? Now is the time on our agenda. Oh, we do have some people signed up for public comment, and this one is related to non-agenda items. So you're welcome to speak on items that are not on our agenda. And our first speaker is Marshall Ancaster.
It's Marcia.
I apologize, Marcia.
That's okay.
I'm just glad you're here.
Thank you. Okay. I'd like to bring up some points about the Box Tops for Education program. And I volunteer, I've been a coordinator at the school since October of 2015, and the program has brought over $2,400 into the school coffers since October 15th of 2015, all the way through March 1st of 2019. The checks the first year totaled about $950. The total for the whole school year collection, which was only eight and a half months from the time I started, came to slightly over $1,200. This year's total through March 1st, 2019, is only $266, which includes $36.40 from the months November, December, January, and February, and $175 from the summer community contributions and the September and summer student community additions. Also, I started a recycling program that's been running since May of 2016, and it goes way beyond what the Marion County Recycling Program is. I work with a national recycling company, and we get paid for all of our recycling. So we collect things like cereal bags, foil-lined granola bar wrappers, empty toothpaste tubes with the caps, and we get paid for every single item. Our first check that came in was after a year and a half, and it totaled $93. We now have over $103 banked, but we have to wait for the next check writing time. Reminders have to be given to students for both programs, and these programs are going to continue to function and bring monies into the school. There are lessons that can be used and that are across many disciplines and not against academics, but that can be used to make academics more interesting and show relevance in the students' daily lives. They are a way to show the students that they can be contributing and participating members of the community, of the school, and show them how they can become participating citizens in the city of Salem. And there's lots of different ways to show them relevance. I just saw that there is a new state law that's been passed, education law that's been passed, that takes academics into relevance in the students' lives rather than just pure academics. So I'd like to ask... in the students' lives rather than just pure academics. So I'd like to ask whether this school district is interested in continuing to support the collection of Box Tops for Education in the Salem Kaiser Title I Elementary Schools. Does the program that has the ability to bring additional non-tax dollars into individual coffers of the participating schools have the support of the board to continue? Or is it going to be continued to be slowly shut down and removed? And what is the reasoning behind this?
Let us do some work on that and consider it so we all understand it. I wasn't aware of the programs at this point. So why don't we do that?
How about if I have a staff member check in with her?
Perfect. And then we'll let you know, too.
Okay, I'd appreciate that. Because I've been asked by a couple of other schools, parents that have found out about the programming, to ask me, will I bring it to their school? And have told me, you will have carte blanche at our school because we want this program there. And right now, the number one school in the area of 230 schools that go all the way up to Gresham and Milwaukee is Yoshikai, and they have way over $1,000 so far.
That's wonderful.
At Box Tops for Education.
Well, thank you. And thank you for participating in that and bringing it to our attention. We will get back to you. Next speaker is Kaye Swires.
Good evening, Board Chair Goss, Superintendent Perry, and members of the board. My name is Kaye Swires, and I reside at 6190 Genesis Street Southeast in Salem, Oregon. Tonight, I am speaking as the parent of two elementary students in our district. This year, my youngest, my six-year-old, started kindergarten. He is an incredible teacher. Unfortunately, his class size, which started out with 32 students, now has increased to 34 students. Thirty-four five- and six-year-olds are squeezed into his kindergarten classroom and onto the carpet during carpet time every day. He comes home to tell me when maybe six kids are out. He's like, wow, Mom, we have less than 34 today. But every day, 34 kids are normally squeezed into his classroom. There are three other kindergarten classrooms at his school, and they all have over 32 students. This is the age when students most need and most benefit from individual attention from their teacher. Our youngest and our most vulnerable students are being placed in classroom situations where achievement is a happy accident, not a guarantee. These same students pay the price when their learning gaps, their academic, social, and behavioral, if not adequately addressed now, will be magnified as they progress through later grades. We are laying the foundation for dropping out and not for graduating. If we say that our motto as a district is to prepare all of our students for life after high school, then we need to focus on laying the educational foundation into kindergarten. And 34 kindergarten students in a classroom is too many. I am urging you all to take a closer look at class size, at recognizing the impact that it has on all of our students, and especially our youngest students. We at Salem Kaiser can do better. We at Salem Kaiser must do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Swires. Our next speaker on the budget is Luz Rivera. I hope I said that right.
Good evening, Board Chair Goss, Superintendent Perry, members of the board, and audience. My name is Luz Rivera, and I reside at 4440 Monroe Avenue, City of Salem. I am speaking with you tonight in my capacity as a licensed professional counselor, school counselor at Myers Elementary School, and member of the SKEA. First and foremost, I want to thank you for your service and the interest of all the publics that are served by our district. I am proud to serve in the state's second-largest school district and one of the districts whose reputation excels, of excellence exceeds the boundaries of our state. We often hear about class size and the increasing number of students, not just in our state but across the country. As a licensed professional school counselor, I, too, have a number. That best-practice, evidence-based number is 250 to 1. At Myers Elementary School, our student population is approximately 560 students for one counselor. And there are elementary schools larger than ours. The reality of a school counselor's role is that we have many tasks, and all are very important, from protocols to protect students who are thinking of self-harm, threats to the school or others. We also do individual counseling, small group counseling. We do consultation with families and teachers. As we have heard from other parents and other teacher professionals in the district, throughout the last couple of years, our escalating number of students with high dysregulation has caused a very huge problem. We have a lot of wonderful things that are working well in our district. You heard about the PBIS model, for which we already access. We access the Office of Behavioral Learning and cadre. But for the students that need that higher attention, I would like to ask the board to fund professional school counselors the way that they're intended to be funded, as part of that partnership, to help better reinforce what our students need. And they need their counselors because we build relationships with them, too. I want to thank everybody that's here, working on the budget. Please note that the other thing that I would like to ask, if we are able to fund it, is for professionals who are skilled in applied behavior analysis, because those particular positions are very key to helping students at the highest pinnacle of the pyramid. Thank you so much for listening. I appreciate every effort that you make.
Thank you. Next is Katrina Olmeyer, Olmiller.
Good evening, Board Chair Goss, Superintendent Perry, and members of the board. My name is Katrina Ola Miller, and I reside in Salem, Oregon. Tonight, I'm speaking as a teacher of the Salem Kaiser Education Association. As we look ahead and begin budget preparations for next year, I want you to know about some of the behaviors we are dealing with in the classroom. We manage moderate to severe behaviors every day, and call for support two to six times on average every single day. When we call for support, it is only when student safety is being compromised. As behaviors continue to escalate, we need more resources, more professional development for all staff, more staff, and more effective ways to deal with behavior that interrupts learning and instruction for all students. My perspective is coming from a kindergarten classroom. These are five- and six-year-olds. I have been teaching for 25 years, and have never seen this kind of behavior coming from our youngest students. On another topic, do you know how much testing and assessing there is in kindergarten? We must give one-on-one assessments in math and literacy before we even know our students, before we're even able to lower their effective filters and help them feel comfortable in their new environment. The tests continue. There are pre-assessments, curriculum assessments, state assessments several times a year, ALPA assessments, and the list goes on and on. All these assessments are one-on-one. When we're given assessment, instructions usually cannot be, instruction cannot be occurring. There's value in an effective assessment. But at this rate, we barely have time to teach. And we're lucky enough to have instructional assistants in our kindergarten classrooms, but all they do is assess and deal with behaviors. We need to take a serious look at the side effects of all this assessing, which may even be adding to the rise of the negative behaviors we are seeing in every single classroom across the district. And let me remind you, I'm talking about five- and six-year-olds. Thank you for your time, and please consider my students and their needs when putting together the budget.
Thank you for coming this evening. And Mindy Merritt, you're next.
Thank you. Chair Goss, Vice Chair Blasi, Superintendent Perry, and fellow school board members. My name is Mindy Merritt, and I reside in Salem, Oregon. I'm here tonight as the president of Salem Kaiser Education Association, representing over 2,300 licensed union members. Tonight, I'm speaking on Agenda 9A and emergent student needs, and actually off the non-agenda items. On February 18th, over 4,500 educators, students, and families stood at the steps of our state capitol, cloaked in red, rallying signs together and standing together to demand a change. Many were carrying signs, waving banners, and shared powerful messages for change. Signs that shared messages such as "Class Size Matters." A kindergartner was holding a sign that read, "34 Students in My Class." A young boy was bundled up holding a sign that read, "Oregon Kids Deserve More," and a big red heart encircled his message. Educators were holding signs that read, "The Future of Oregon is in my hands in my classroom." Another sign read, "Children Learn as They Play, Most Importantly. In play, children learn how to learn." We need to bring play back into learning. To the signs that cut right to the point, assault is still assault regardless of the special education identification. Another sign read, "Since Parkland, there's been a school shooting every 12 days in our country. Yet in Oregon, the student-to-counselor ratio is 522 to 1." A child of a teacher holds a sign that states, "My mom cries every night." A teacher holds another sign that reads, "I didn't go to college to be a punching bag." A student's sign reads, "Why does my right to a safe class matter less than the kid who hurts me?" The truth is, is that we're struggling. And in our elementary schools, and our middle schools, and our high schools, many of our classrooms, especially our elementary schools' room clears are a common reality. And that's traumatic for all of the students. All students, kindergartners, through seniors, are impacted by the social-emotional needs of their peers, as well as the climate within our schools. Our students, our staff, and our educators, they're all calling for help. They're all impacted by this. It makes a difference. It's the leadership within our district, it's the leadership within our buildings, that matters. It's the ability to step back and build those relationships, and to say, we can make a change. We can start to look at how to make a difference within our building, and to build those relationships with our families and our community that matters. As a leader, I'm asking you to help us to build those relationships because it matters.
Tyler Selayo-Lakeberg. And I'm sure I made that, I chopped that up, and I'm sorry.
That's all right. So, good evening, Board Chair Goss, Superintendent Perry, and members of the board. So my name is Tyler Skello-Lakeberg, and I reside in Salem, Oregon. I'm here today to speak to you as a vice president of the Salem Kaiser Education Association, speaking on the behalf of the 2,300-plus members. First, I want to thank you for your commitment to advocating for adequate funding for our schools with the passing of the resolution last month. As we look ahead, we know whether funding increases or not, we will have many difficult decisions ahead as we set the budget. Tonight, you've heard from some members. They have shared with you some of their stories and the needs for their students. As we move forward, I encourage you to listen and seek their input as the budget decisions are made. These are the individuals working every day with our students. They know the needs, the gaps, and often have the solutions to help. Please listen to them. I also ask that this board ultimately approves a budget that is transparent in addressing equity in our schools. I also ask that our classrooms, with our teachers and specialists alike in mind, have the first considerations on the budget, meaning we cannot continue to have a trickle-down effect of funding from top down. We hope that the bond will address some of the needs in our schools and buildings. However, there are still many gaps, from bilingual elementary teachers that are trying to create bilingual materials to fill in and stay on track for ReadyGen, to our PE teachers that are putting together activities with broken equipment, and many of our classrooms with broken desks, unreliable technology, and radiators that will burn the skin if touched. We need to ensure that each classroom is at a level to maximize student learning. I often wonder why our district offices are so well-equipped, with double monitors, standing desks, climate control, access to paper and printing and other office supplies. Why are our schools, serving our students directly, not provided with the same working conditions? We need to listen and prioritize so that our students can succeed. Please consider the stories that you've heard tonight, and more to come in the next following months, the needs that they represent. We understand there will be difficult decisions ahead, but the needs of our students must come first. And who better to help you understand those needs than the people working directly with our students and serving them daily? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving along. Our next thing, we've had public comment is, is board member activity. Gosh, and we haven't done that for a while, so look back over about the last three, four weeks, and you can put them together. Director Hyon?
I had fun buying some very expensive cupcakes at the Shirley Elementary School Roaring 20s fundraiser. The PTC of that school is awesome. They are pretty good at fundraising, and they take care of all the students for different field trips, so that no student is, you know, left behind because they can't afford it. They take care of these kids. And it's just awesome work they're doing. Also, I got to enjoy breakfast at Waldo. I didn't actually eat it, but I got to watch all the kids being served along with Director Lippold. And speaking of Box Tops for Education, I save all mine and take them to Washington Elementary. Unfortunately, a lot of the products that used to have those box tops doesn't anymore, so I don't get as many. But it's a good program.
Director Green?
I, with Director Kylo and Director Lippold, and Superintendent Perry, attended the middle school all-city orchestra performance at North Salem High School. And I went because my daughter made it. And they really perform, I'll brag a little bit, but it's no wonder our schools win as many state championships as they do. These middle school kids, you thought you were listening to professional orchestra performances. They did a fantastic job. I also want to give a shout-out to South Salem High School, fifth in state in boys' basketball. One of their team members was first-team all-tournament. Also, Sprague High School's wrestling team finished third in the state, and I believe McKay finished eighth in the state. And we had numerous state champions in wrestling, so congratulations to all of them. And as we move into the spring season, just to remind you, that's when our orchestra and our choir and our music programs all perform. And I hear from other school board members around the state that they don't want to take on Salem in those competitions, so.
Director Lippold?
Okay. Well, I do a lot of stuff, so it's kind of hard to keep track, and it's been a while since we've done this. So just the ones that pop off the top of my head. We went to the all-city, I went to the middle school and the high school one, and these kids are incredible. I'm just super impressed. They're, like, even the middle schoolers, these kids are like, what, 12 years old, and they're basically professionals. So I thought that was awesome. I do my weekly mentorship. I do my weekly mentorship with a student out of Harriet, which, by the way, I recommend all of you do that. If you can, just find the time of your day. I mean, it takes like, what, 30 minutes to an hour out of your life, but to that kid, it means way more, it means so much to them. And so, you know, building a relationship, playing some football on recess, so that's fun. We went to the breakfast event for Governor Brown, as well as Teresa, Representative Teresa Alonso Leon, and Board Member, Board Director Marty Hyen, and Superintendent Perry. We're all there. It was fun, made sure kids drank their milk. You know, it'll make them stronger, so that was my duty there. And I'm sure I did other things, I just can't think of it.
Okay.
I read Dr. Seuss out on March 1st at Forest Ridge Elementary School to several classes.
Had an opportunity to go to the Coalition for Equality event that Director Lipold was at, too, if you remember that. And it was very well-done and good turnout and a good session. As you know, I spend a lot of time at CTE, and in talking to the principal out there, they've had 827 kids, young adults, apply for 600 spots for next year. So, CTE is really taking off, and we're very proud of the progress in the faculty out there.
On my own part, I have to agree with two of our speakers. CTE was spectacular. I went out there for a quarterly meeting, and it was just a wonderful experience. It always is when I've gone out there. And you can, of course, get ahold of Mr. Lee if you do want to go through that and see what we're doing. It's really making an impact on kids. I'm very pleased with it. And I also went to the middle school music program, and it was really something. So, you need to treat yourself if you have time. And it was a local donor from our community that rented a bus, fed 50 people dinner, and took us all to the middle school music program, and it was well worth your time and effort.
Thank you, Mr. Dick Whitnell, right?
Yes, it was. And any other activity we want to put in before that closes? Okay, superintendent's report.
All right, so I'll just add to the music program. The dinner before was actually a fundraiser for Music Lessons Project, and they provide music lessons for kids that, and families who can't afford it, private music lessons in the North and McKay Theater area. So, that's Sandy Wiss Carson's project. And then, as we remember, CTE moves the mark for graduation. We're in the middle now of doing CTE showcases for our eighth graders across every theater area and every high school, and CTE for our incoming 11th graders, which I guess we don't need to do so many now because there are 800 and some for 600 slots. But we are really doing that recruitment process at eighth grade because we want those kids to see themselves in a pathway starting their freshman year. Yes.
How, what is the selection process for that?
For-
I know you probably maybe don't know offhand, but-
For CTE?
Yes.
Yeah, they have an application, and they have to submit it on time. It's a fairly basic application. We want to see some basic skills and initiative. And then, they go through a selection process, reading essays, and I believe there's an interview. Is that correct, Mr. Ores? No interview? Okay. So, then they go through the applications and select from there.
So, is there some, like, criteria you have documented on how you grade or give points or whatever you do to each one to determine who gets to go to CTE? Because I want to go.
Principal Rhodes would be able to give more detail in terms of the exact criteria. We certainly identify students that are more or less on track to graduate because attending at CTE is a little bit of a challenge in some ways because they're going to another location. Also, we have some additional supports there that we're starting to implement to help students. The other criteria is really focused on the students really having career interest in the career area of the program, and that's what those essays are about primarily. So, we want to make sure that we're putting the right students in the right programs for the right reasons. And so, the assessment of those, of those questions, application questions, are really what Principal Rhodes and Assistant Principal Weber are looking for.
Thank you.
And then, I just wanted to make note that the Oregon Black Pioneers celebrated their 25th anniversary this month, and at that celebration, they, Willie Richardson, who's the current president of the Oregon Black Pioneers, traced back that organization's history to Homer Kearns and to the Salem Kaiser School District as a launch place for that organization. So, I thought that was a great historical moment for the district to really be just mentioned in their 25th anniversary. So, they are a great partner and really work to boost curriculum for us around the history of our Oregon Black Pioneers. And then, lastly, if you don't have it on your calendar yet, March 20th at 8:50 at South Salem High School, we're having a Unified Sports Assembly. And this is a chance to see all students in a school working together in a unified way, with disabilities and without, in an assembly. And it's just a great program and a real tribute to a couple of our special educators, education teachers there, that they worked on a unified sports program. His goal is to have unified sports in every high school across the district, so he started it at South Salem. That's it for my report.
Thank you very much. I guess that brings us to the end this evening. Want to, we have one more?
Yeah, on the 23rd is the North Salem's groundbreaking. Is this the 23rd?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Anyways, you shall go.
Thank you. Thanks, Jesse. I missed that in my comments.
No worries.
And again, thank each one of you for giving of your time and for coming and listening and offering your advice. It really is very much appreciated. Thank you. And we're adjourned.